Could please take your seat so we can begin the meeting. All right, good evening. We're gonna have invocation this evening by Pastor Dallas Wilson of the Center of Hope Ministry, Inc., in Riverdale that will be followed by the pledge of allegiance. If you would, join me and stand.
Let us pray. It is to you, oh God, that we give thanks on this day. We thank you for the gift of life, health, and strength. We also thank you for this county and the leaders that dwell therein. God, we ask that your grace and your presence reside in this place. Give us wisdom and peace. For this, we will bless you. Now and forevermore, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the April 21st, 2015 Regular Business Meeting. The board will now adopt this evening's agenda. First, I would like to call attention to the first item that we received a request to remove. That's item number 27. That's the Lakes at Monday's Mill zoning petition. This item is located on page seven of your agenda. The applicant, Skyview Media, is requesting a zoning petition for Phase Two of the Lakes at Monday's Mill be tabled until the May 19th, 2015 Regular Business Meeting. May we have a motion to remove this item?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we remove the item. Consideration this evening.
Second.
Probably move and second those in favor of I.
Aye.
Oppose.
That's just to reiterate, the board has just voted to remove item number 27, which is the zoning petition for Lakes at Monday's Mill. Also have some updates from staff. Did receive from Chief Staff Attorney, an update to Resolution Number 215-103. I'm sorry, let me pass this information down to the board. We would also need a motion to accept this update. It's for Resolution Number 215-103.
Do you have more updates to include?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead and let's do all of them.
Let's do all?
Yes.
Okay. We also have an update for Resolution 215-100. That's the attachment, the First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement for the Use of Distribution of Proceeds from the 2018 Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax for Capital Outlay Projects. We also have one other, another one in relation to 215, 2015-101. This is the First Amendment to Intergovernmental Agreement for the Use of Distribution of Proceeds from the 2015 Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax for Capital Outlay Projects. If you, Mr. Chairman, want to move forward with taking all three together.
Is there a motion for all three of the updates?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we include the updated resolutions as unnoted by the clerk.
Is there a second? Uh, second, probably move and second those in favor of I.
Aye.
Oppose. unanimous.
With these updates and the removal of item number 27, if we can have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Madam Clerk, I have some requests to remove. Number one, recommendation to special local option sales tax. I understand there was a contract that we were not provided. Is that correct?
I believe that is correct. That information was received after the finalization of the agenda, so that information was not included.
Because we've not had an opportunity to read the documents that are relevant, I move that we remove item number one, recommendation for award for the Sploes Program Management Services.
That's your motion. Is there a second on it?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chair.
Probably move and second those in favor of I.
Aye.
Oppose. unanimous.
Does the board offer any further amendments?
Yes. I understand that on item number two and number three, there were additional documents that were not included in our packets as well.
That is correct.
Mr. Chairman, I move to remove recommendation, I'm sorry, RFB Package 1509 and RFP Package 1510 regarding the Sploes Milling resurfacing with CW Matthews from consideration this evening.
What was the second one?
1509 and 1510 for the four districts.
Is there a second?
I second, Mr. Chair.
Probably move and second those in favor of I.
Aye.
These are the CD with the 600 pages that we heard about a little bit ago?
Uh-huh, 600 pages.
Okay, just wanna make sure we're on the same page. I always had the impression there was three new items that were gonna be added.
unanimous, Madam Clerk.
Are there any further amendments? With these noted amendments, may we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the agenda with a noted changes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move and second those in favor of I.
Aye.
Oppose. unanimous.
Approval of the April 7, 2015 Regular Business Meeting Minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the April 7, 2015 Regular Business Meeting Minutes.
Is there a second? I'll probably, uh, second it, move and properly second those in favor of I.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, we will not have public comment. We do have citizens signed up this evening. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residence for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
All right, Blanche Jones. Yes, please take the podium.
Good evening. I'm Blanche Jones. I reside in Clayton County, Hampton, Georgia, 1058 Misty Meadows. I'm here because I'm, I was cited for having a basketball goal in my front yard. It's on the side of the, of my driveway, and I was told that I would have to move it each time my son is not using it, and he plays basketball almost every day, depending on the weather. And it, it, it's as tall as 12 feet, and it's very hard for us to move. I had to ask neighbors to help me to move it. And I did go to court already for it and tried to explain it, so the judge said it's almost impossible for me to move it, us. I'm a single parent, so I had to ask two, two neighbors to help me to move it. And to do that every day is, you know, is gonna be difficult. And he plays, uh, he's a basketball player. He plays for high school, he plays at AAU basketball all the time. And it's not a hindrance to the driveway or, nor is it facing the street. They don't play in the street, they play in the driveway, and it's very orderly done. My question is, what, what, what is a resolution for me? Because it's so big, I can't get it moved, and I've been cited, I paid $270, went to court, and I came home today, and another notice is on my, my door, telling me I have to move it every day. They did give me a timeframe, there's no timeframe in the ordinance. So, the only time he's not playing basketball is at night. He lives, sleeps, and eat basketball. He wants to be a basketball player. So, that was my way of getting him, you know, getting him where he needs to be a better basketball player. They've taken it away from the playground area, they're taking it away from the pavilion area. There's no other place in the residential area for him to play. So, I provided it at our home, on our, you know, on my property, and they're telling me I gotta move it.
Well, ma'am, we can't make that decision for you as to what to do with a goal or not to do with it, but what I will tell you is if you give Ms. Barnes a call, she is our staff attorney, and she may have a solution for you. I'm not gonna say a solution, but go over to the specifics of the ordinance and see what your options are.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Thank you, ma'am. Harry Osborne.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm privileged and pleased and proud to serve on the Board of Elections for the county as a result of y'all's appointment, and I appreciate the public service opportunity that it gives, but also the opportunity that I've had to work with Annie Bright. I want to kinda share some thoughts that Shakespeare put into words hundreds of years ago. He put into the mouth of Mark Antony thousands of years ago on the Ides of March, "I come to bury Caesar, not to praise him." Well, kinda barring on that, I've come to praise Annie, not to bury her. She's not gonna be buried. She's gonna lead a full and fulfilling life after her service as Elections Director, and I just wanna make sure that the board is aware that you have had a person of great competence in that position. I recently attended a board, State Elections Board meeting in Macon with Annie, and it was obvious the esteem and the respect and the real affection that people have for her at the state level, as well as in the other counties throughout the state, having to do with elections. She's hardworking, she's gracious and pleasant, and she's been a real asset for Clayton County, and I've appreciated the opportunity of working with her, and I'm sure that y'all are satisfied and pleased with the work that she has done on your behalf in seeing that we have had honest, fair, and efficient elections in Clayton County. Thank you.
Mr. Osborne, you stole my thunder there. That's exactly what I was gonna say. But at the same time, the does, the board does recognize the long and effective career of Ms. Annie Bright, and I wish she was here today. But the beauty of recording this is she can watch it later, so let's give her a round of applause for many years of service. Dr. Wilbert Jordan.
Good evening, Chairman Turner and members of the Commission. I'm here tonight to thank y'all for bringing Marty to Clayton County. I have attended most of the Marty's meetings with the community, and last week I was at one, and, and a concern came up. People have been asking a lot of questions, and it seems that they have not been getting direct answers from Marty. They've been getting kinda circular answers. So, I think that we should have a citizens review panel that can actually hear from the, the community and actually report back to the Commission, because really, we're paying a price to have Marty here. And as you know, I fought hard to get Marty here, and I believe prevention, if we need to look at it ahead of time and make sure that Marty gives us everything that they promised, because I get a feeling, listening to some of them, that they might be like, okay, I'm married to you now, I can forget you. But we're gonna make sure that they don't do that. So, I, I want y'all to consider setting up a civilian review panel that will report to the board, that the public really can know that their voice is being heard and they're not gonna be annoyed. I know we got two, uh, members of the board, but they two out of 12, and remember, they are Marty Board of Directors now, okay? That's my concern.
Dr. Jordan, the meeting was last Monday. Do you mind me asking what specific, if you, if you, if it's not?
It was a, a, a group there that was in Riverdale, and it seemed that they had met with, the board came to their household homeowners association, and they was kinda, I think, a little upset, because I think they had met with them before, and they didn't feel that Marty addressed their concerns. And it's other meetings I've heard that, and I, I know I spoke with Roberta, and, and she says she addressed that, but, you know, I love Roberta, but remember, she's part of Marty's board, and she's only one, and, you know, the others could outvote her. So, I wanna make sure that we are getting everything that our penny was promised, okay? Thank you so much.
Lisa Fleming.
Good evening, Chairman. Me again. As I sat here over to the side, listening to the other speakers, I was counting these blocks on your wall behind you, and there's 50 of them. And 48 animals died yesterday morning. Forty-eight, and almost enough animals to cover your whole backboard. So, that's why I'm here to speak tonight. I own the kennel that houses a lot of these animals, and rescue groups are not coming around right now, and I'm out asking the questions, why? Go to Clayton, don't go to Fulton, don't go to DeKalb, go to Clayton. And they're giving me the feedback, and they're like, well, for example, I have a dog named Monty. Monty came to me from Fulton County. Monty came into my kennel with the rabies, the snipper parvo, bordatella, heartworm tested, he was negative by the way. Everything but a health certificate was done. He was neutered as well, before he even left Fulton County. And the rescue says to me, I can either go get Monty a health certificate for $30 and then transport him up, or I can go to Clayton and I have to take that dog, which is 90% gonna have kennel cough, treat him for kennel cough for 14 days, put an investment for the three shots, the spire, the neuter, the heartworm testing, and possibly heartworm treatment if he's positive, and I've got an investment at least from a minimum of $300 to $400 to a maximum of eight. So, why would I do that? When I can go to this other shelter, my expenses much less. So, this is our problem. We need out-of-state rescue to help. There's not enough local rescues. I'm burnt out. Sarah's maxed out. TLC is getting there. Angels among us are, you know, they're doing well, but they won't take as many as we do. And I'm, when I say maxed out, I'm talking, I went to, I, I went to the shelter Sunday. Chief of Police Porter, very nice thing he did, he allowed me to video some of the dogs. And James and I set out in the rain, we videoed 15 dogs, and most of those dogs now are gone. And it's hard to video these dogs. It's hard to sit out in the rain, it's hard to play with them, and to go back and watch your video and know that they died the very next day. And they will die unless we have rescue to support us. And the only way the rescues are gonna come in and support us is if they get what they're getting from these other shelters. A staff vet, we've talked about it before, will be able to deliver, and I know you said it's either gonna be in-house or it's gonna be contracted out, and there needs to be a vote on that, between the Board of Commissioners has to vote which way that's gonna go, and I'm just begging, and please make it urgent, you know, so we can get this underway, because 50 animals just, almost 50 animals just die. I mean, I, I know everybody has pets. Fifty, just line them up on your backboard. It's horrible, and I can't even imagine the person that has to do this job. I couldn't sleep at night. So, I mean, that, that's my request, is to please expedite this and get something done so that we don't have to terminate the lives of 50 animals every single week.
Excuse me, your three-minute time limit has expired.
But I will tell you that there, and within this budget, there is a position for a full-time veterinarian.
Have, have you spoken to Paige Turner, the Chairman of the Animal Control Board?
I've been to the Animal Control Board meetings
Okay.
in the past, and yes, I'm saying the same thing.
Yeah, she's made, she's allowed, sent us a recommendation to hire a permanent vet.
Yeah, and, and Chief has made that request, so we, it has to be voted on, the budget still has to be voted on, but I did have a position placed into that.
Okay, do we have a, an, a timeline?
The budget goes into effect July 1.
July 1, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Kimberly Kirby. No. Kim Ryan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Quinn Howard, I'm a resident of Clayton County, and now thanks to you all, I'm now board member of the Southern Regional Hospital. What I'd like to just say to, to the Commissioners today is that after having our meeting, we would just like for you all to know that we like to be transparent, and we like to be here the first and the third Tuesday that you meet, so that any questions that any of the community citizens have, we will be available 15 minutes before and 15 minutes after the meeting for any questions pertaining Southern Regional Hospital. Thank you so much.
And I'm Kim Ryan. I am the CEO of Southern Regional, as you know. I just wanted to share with you a life that we saved at the hospital, and it's part of our signature programs, and this one is a young 30-year-old citizen of Clayton County who had had a previous stroke, and we are a Gold Plus Stroke Award winner at the hospital. It's the highest honor you can get in terms of stroke care. This 34-year-old gentleman was with his father a couple weeks ago and collapsed. His father called 911. Clayton County EMS rushed to the home, brought him to Southern Regional. We were in contact with EMS en route and realized that he was having another stroke and called a stroke alert, so that when he got to the hospital, everyone that needed to be there to facilitate his care were there. He had a CAT scan within 10 minutes, and what we found was that half of his brain had no blood flow because of a massive blood clot. We then gave him what's called TPA, which is a blood thinner, a clot thinner, and then worked with our partner, which is Grady, and they have the technology and the personnel to remove the clot, and so again called Clayton County EMS, and he was transported immediately to Grady, where they removed a one-inch blood clot. He then had another CAT scan, which showed that side that had no blood flow had full blood flow, and he will fully recover. That if this hospital was not here, he would not either be alive or he would not have movement on the right side of his body. So, I just wanted you to know what your local community hospital does in partnership with Clayton County EMS. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Linda Ingram.
I'm back. I really hate to keep coming back. You have my emails from today, I'm sure all of you, so I'm not gonna go into that. I, sometimes, I've worked, I've worked for these dogs tooth and nail since 2011, and here lately it just seemed like we're not getting anywhere. Everything is going backwards, so I'm just gonna, I'm gonna be fast for my three minutes. Here's a dog named Madison. He was, he was adopted at a very pure, a very, it was, I think it's a German Shepherd, purebred. His name was Mattis. He was returned because the people could not take care of it, did not have time. He was trained, he had all of his shots, everything other than being neutered. He has been killed. Now, if a dog has been returned, and all of this, and here it is, all the info that they put on it at Animal Control, y'all can read it, yet he's killed. Lisa had a rescue for this dog. They are just killing dogs out there. They don't care down there, in the hell, I mean, well, I won't go out here, I'll have to meet with you to, to really say that. But this dog is a disgrace to the, to the citizens of Clayton County, and I am in your district. The dogs that were killed, the pit bulls, audience, if you have a dog that accidentally gets out on Friday or Saturday, and it is put in Animal Control, it has three days, for some reason you love your animal, your pit bull, you don't get to Animal Control. When three days are up, they can kill this dog without any explanation. So, just letting you know, if you love your dog and you love your pet, you better get it out, because they love to kill down there. Now, I have, I didn't get all the dogs. I do, I do picture them every time one is killed. I have the dog that was adopted out, I finally found a picture of it was killed, that was killed by, by being adopted out. I have, I do have, they're seldom are any reclaimed, but two or three are reclaimed. I have pictures of pit bulls that are killed. So, the three days on the weekend is not very long, plus posted, they're very late about getting, posting their dogs out, to get out, and as soon as they're posted, I put them on, I put them on Facebook, asked the owners to go get their dogs, and they only have three days. So, I, I do this for two days, owners, please get your dog, but they're not posting them as they come in. So, y'all please help us. I am so tired. I have filed, like I said, since 2011, when Captain Thompson and the other volunteer group was there. Things are worse. We need your help. Now, I gave you my emails today, I swear on a stack of bibles, I do not lie. You know that, you know, the mayor, the, the mayor of Riverdale or anybody can tell you, I do not lie, right? So, I'm very upset, so I would like to have a meeting with y'all, okay? And I would like to give my opinion, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment.
We will now have a proclamation whereby Clayton County observes April 2015 as the National Safe Digging Month. Are any representatives here today to receive the proclamation? If you will, please, if you'll come forward, as we ask the Commissioners to rise from their respective seats at the table and join them for the presentation of the proclamation.
And the proclamation reads, Clayton County observes April 2015 as National Safe Digging Month. Whereas, thousands of times each year, the underground infrastructure in Georgia is damaged by those who do not have underground lines located prior to digging, resulting in service interruption, environmental damage, and threat to public safety. And whereas, in 2015, the Federal Communications Commission designated 811 to provide contractors and homeowners a simple number to contact utility operators to request the location of underground lines at the intended dig site. And whereas, the Clayton County Utility Coordinating Committee, a stakeholder-driven organization dedicated to the prevention of damage to underground utilities in Georgia, promotes the National 811 Notification System in an effort to- promotes the National 811 Notification System in an effort to reduce these damages. And whereas, damage prevention is a shared responsibility. By using safe digging practices, the contractors and homeowners of Clayton County can save time, money, and help keep our infrastructure safe and connected. And whereas, the Clayton County Board of Commissioners recognizes and observes the month of April 2015 as National Safe Digging Month. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2015 as National Safe Digging Month in Clayton County, Georgia. I encourage contractors and homeowners throughout Clayton County to always call 811 before digging. Safe digging is no accident. In witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 21st day of April in the year 2015. Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman.
The board will now consider the requests of Deborah Brewer, Director of Central Services.
Ms. Brewer, if you would, take them all together, please.
Thank you, and good evening. We have three requests. The first is a recommendation to amend RFP Package 1353, relocation of Clark Howell Highway and realignment of Forest Parkway, Clayton County, Georgia. First contract amended, this contract was awarded by the BOC on December 17, 2013. The recommendation is to adjust the quantities of specific pay items and to add new items to the net increase of $187,191.96. The Transportation and Development Department's recommendation and agreement, amendment are attached for your review and consideration. Funding is available through the 2004 SPOS Fund. The next one.
Mr. Chairman, can we take the last one, number six separately, please?
Take number six separately.
The next is a recommendation to amend the current contract with Southern Home Care Services Incorporated doing business as Rest Care Home Care located in College Park, Georgia, to provide a 61-day calendar extension from May 1, 2015 to June 30 of 2015. Southern Home Care Services has agreed to accept the amendment. This will adjust the contract term to align with the grant funded fiscal year and provide for a transition period. Funding is available through the fiscal year 2015 Atlanta Regional Commission Grant. The senior services recommendation, vendor acceptance, and contract amendment are attached for your review and information. The request is for you to approve the recommendations, authorize the chairman or his designate to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly.
So, yeah.
I have number six, you want me to take that?
Motion to approve.
No, no, we'll take that separately. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? I'll second, I'll probably move to second. Any questions on any other items?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. RFP Package 1353, the relocation of Clark Howell Highway. Per the documents enclosed, the reason for changing the project price was the addition of a left-turn-only lane on Forest Parkway for Blaylock Industrial Parkway, I'm sorry Boulevard, that was one of the reasons. Do you know whether or not that particular change wasn't foreseeable when the bid was provided to us or the not-to-exceed amount was established?
The need for that turn lane was established based off of negotiations for right-of-way acquisition, actually a condemnation-type pending case with a private business that is located off of that road. This is a negotiated settlement to basically make the road project conducive to their current business. We were harming them. And this is a way to, we went back and forth with the business owner trying to come up with a amenable situation, and this is the end result.
Okay. I've noticed in the past, and including in this particular contract, we have terms that say we will not exceed a certain price. And that is a negotiated, I presume, term between ourselves and the person having the contract. Is that fair?
Well, on, on construction bid, there's not a negotiation. They give us a bid prices based off the quantity. You give unit prices, and a simple multiplication comes up with a maximum price.
Okay. So based on that, we establish a contract, and that is put into the contract, we will not, not exceed, for example, $1 million, no matter what, correct?
Yeah. If there are changes to the scope of work that's required, then that is an adjustment that may cause the amount not to exceed, but it's based on a different or added scope of work. But the cost for the initial contract will not exceed that amount based on the scope of work that was covered in the initial contract.
So you're saying it's not firm, it can't exceed that particular number?
It's firm for the work that's described in the scope of work initially, but if there's additional work that's required, there may be additional costs for the additional work that may cause it to increase as, as you ask for unforeseen circumstances or additional work.
Okay. Are there provisions in the contract that specifically spell out, in the event the scope of work changes, then the not-to-exceed price will also change?
Yes, there should be.
Okay. And the contract provided to us, it does not say that. What we have is, you're now requesting that the not-to-exceed price exceeds the prior not-to-exceed price. So now we've exceeded what we say we would not exceed.
Based on additional work.
Right. But if you don't, in my opinion, just from my background, not state that in your contract, that it will exceed per the scope, then why are we allowing it to exceed? Do you understand the question? If I don't put it in the contract that the scope of work allows for me to increase the price, then how do we allow the price to increase?
Only when the scope of work changes. You cannot increase the price if the scope of work does not change.
I understand that, but if we don't say that that is a provision that allows for the price to increase, why then do we allow the price to increase?
Because of the necessity of obtaining the services that are required by the county and for the ease of the contracting also, then it would be beneficial to the county to add it to the existing contract rather than to renew or procure a completely separate contract to add one line item, which would be completed by the same contractor.
Okay. How can I feel comfortable that this now $4,561,853.11 will no longer exceed the $4,561,843.11? How can I feel comfortable?
Commissioner, I do apologize, I, I don't have.
Contract, page 2 of 6, paragraph 2.
And Commissioner, I do apologize, we don't have the initial contract in front of us, but I will review that provision.
Is that something we need to vote on today?
The interesting situation with this, this was brought forward in front of the board in November for a budget amendment, and it was approved. So the same situation was brought up then. There was an oversight with staffing changes at the time, the contract did not come forward.
So you're saying that?
The budget's been amended, but the contract with the worker, with the vendor has, has never been formally amended. But the, but y'all approved to add more money to the project based off the needs back in November.
Okay, so how are we bringing, procedurally, when we don't have a contract, how are we allowing the money to be there when there's no contract in place? I only know what you give me to read, so I have very limited knowledge about that.
Well, the contract is, is current, the contractor's currently working on the project. This, this is a pending change order that's obviously had some shelf life to it now, since it's sat since November. The contractor has not been performing this, work in this area, but it, it's getting close to the time he needs to go ahead and get into that area or will be facing extension delays on the project, which would potentially incur additional costs.
I don't have any other questions.
All right, any other questions? Hearing none, those in favor, I.
Aye.
Opposed.
Mr. Chairman, I vote nay on RFP Package 1353.
All right, Commissioner Rooks is voting nay on 15 dash, what was it again? 1353.
1353.
41 passes. Thank you. Number six.
Number six is a recommendation for renewal of annual contract, RFP 1230, Brokerage Services for voluntary employee benefits for Human Resources Department on a month-to-month basis. This was approved by the Board of Commissioners on November 20, 2012. The recommendation is to renew on a month-to-month basis with Alexander and Company located in Woodstock, Georgia, beginning on May 1, 2015, and continuing into services or re-procur. The attached agreement is for your review and consideration. Request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the chairman or his designate to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and authorize the chief financial officer to amend, amend the budget accordingly.
Is there a motion? Make the motion, is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Probably move to second, are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I do. This board did not vote to renew this contract just last month. The way this is worded suggests that it's being brought back to us again for another year. And the reason I say that, or until re-procur, normally the language in an extension of a contract is for a finite period of time, 30, 60, 90 days while the bidding process is going out again. So when did you start the rebidding process, and when do you expect it to be done? And why can't we amend this to have some sort of a maximum number of days?
We're actually meeting with Central Services to begin the process next week for the RFP process. The reason that we're asking to go month-to-month is because not only does Alexander and Company provide the voluntary benefit services, broker services, but we also use their open enrollment and eligibility system. So they have all of our data, and that's got to be moved over to another product. It's either got to come in-house, or we've got to secure another system. And we've talked with our IT folks, they say it will take a minimum of four months to move all of that information over and to test it, and, and so we're, and it could be a little longer than that.
Now, we've only had contracts with Alexander and Company for what, one year?
Since 2012.
Right, so a year, year and a half now. And it takes four months to transfer the data that they've only had for 18 months or so?
It's all of our insurance, it's, it's our, all of our medical plans.
Now, do we have any documentation for HIPAA compliance and security on that nature?
Yes, and all of it has to be transferred under those guidelines.
And so again, back to my question, when do you expect the, the bidding process to be complete? And why couldn't we add a deadline onto this?
I believe we, we anticipate that it will take about four months for the RFP, the bidding process, to be completed. We expect to, that it will take about four months for the data to be transferred over. If, if it's the board's desire to place, you know, a six-month, to give us enough time to ensure that we can, we move all the data that it's moved over correctly and that it's received, so that we don't lose any of the medical.
How many other contracts do the county have that are for 12 months that takes six months to replace? And how come these don't come before, six months before the contract is up on 12-month contracts?
This was a renewal, but I, I can't answer the other.
This is a contract that came for you for renewal, they had.
I understand, I remember.
And when we did not renew it, then we will have to re-procur them, because we anticipated it being renewed and continuing, because it had two renewal terms remaining on the contract. And when it was renewed, we had to make some determination to provide continuation of benefits and services to the employees until we can re-procur a process. We are ready and available to start the process, however they were, the department was.
Ms. Brewer, I understand, hence my questions, I understand, you're just regurgitating what's before us, I get that. What, again, what I'm trying to understand is, what this is before us tonight is to renew their contract, pervert, consistent with the provisions of their contract for up to a year, which is the same thing that we just didn't approve last month, except this is on a month-to-month basis.
On a month-to-month basis, it may be four months, it may be six months. We can produce an RFP and put it on the street, but however, they will need four months before the existing vendor can prepare the documents to transfer. So if we sped that RFP process up, they still would not have it ready for, for a new vendor to come in to take over the services.
I give up, no more questions.
Ms. Brewer, what happens if we don't approve this tonight? What happens?
Nothing. According to the HIPAA contracts, nothing would happen.
Ms. Brewer, what, what happens?
Well, you know, they would have all of our information regarding all of our benefits, and we would still have to work with Alexander and Company to get all of that information transferred over. And it's not just from them, but it's, it's also our medical carrier. Everything goes through that HR Infinity enrollment system.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, those in favor, I.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
41, Mr. Emerson, opposed. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, was there a vote on the RFP number 09-28? If there was, I apologize.
09-28, it was, yes, unanimously.
It was grouped doubles, grouped with the other four.
The board will now consider the request of Ramona Bevins, Chief Financial Officer.
Take them together, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I have seven items for your consideration this evening. Budget Amendment 2-27 is for the fire department, to amend the budget in the amount of $4,000 to recognize revenue received from TENSAR to assist with facility upgrades. Budget Amendment 2-28 is for the prison, to amend the budget in the amount of $9,063 to recognize revenue received from Bells Communication to assist with boarding supplies. Budget Amendment 2-29 is for State Court Technology Fund, to amend the budget to revise the traffic court system and purchase software due to a statute change. The amount is $10,000. Budget Amendment 2-30 is for other general government, to amend in revenue in the amount of $414,364 in insurance premium taxes and to budget funds to replace the environmental control system for the justice complex. 2-31 is for the prison, to provide three replacement vehicles for the Clayton County Prison in the amount of $79,000. Budget Amendment two dash thirty-two is for Federal Narcotics Condemnation Fund. To establish a budget in the amount of thirteen thousand five hundred dollars from seized drug funds to purchase two used vehicles for the Sheriff's Department. Budget Amendment two dash thirty-three is other general government. To amend fifty thousand dollars into the budget to recognize rental income and miscellaneous revenue for Community Improvement District.
Okay, is there a motion? I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Probably second, any questions on any of the items?
Just one small. Go ahead.
Let's see which one, two thirty-three?
Why are we voting on that before we vote on the resolution?
The chairman asked us to go ahead and include it in here because at the last board meeting, it was expressed by Commissioner Hammer, I believe, that we wanted to move forward with this project. So we went ahead and, um, did the budget amendment to put the money in place in the event that the board did approve it, so we would not have to come back, wait two more weeks to come back for the next board meeting, so they could move forward if the board approved the resolution. If it's not approved, the fund will just sit there, we won't, they won't be used.
We just get the resolution.
So what if we?
Well, yeah.
He just gave us the resolution, right?
Yeah, we had the resolu-, yeah. We had not voted on the resolution, but we're gonna vote on the funding source.
We just need to hold that one right until after the resolution, Christie.
And at the end of the resolution, I believe it has language that authorizes the chief financial officer to amend the budget uh, to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all that may be required, so it, it should be covered. For either way. Yes. But this, this budget amendment does reflect exactly the funding source for the fund.
You want to amend the, the agenda to have this considered after that resolution?
I would prefer it.
Can you make a motion?
Before you do that, just one last question on this. Rental income, the extra twenty-six thousand dollars of additional revenues, where did that come from exactly?
I have the look, we have, um, several sources of rental income and I can't tell you right off the top of my head exactly which source that it came from, but that line item, we've, we have, um, collected more than what we had projected we would so far, so.
Could you send an accounting of what additional rental incomes we have from all sources that are above our budget?
Sure, we can do that, we'll do that in the morning.
Thank you.
While he's on that, did you consider the monies that the former consultant for the CID uh, returned to the county, is that in this fu- funding source?
It's in, um, when we received it, we recorded it in the miscellaneous revenue line item, so.
Okay, that's what that is, okay.
All right, any other questions?
So, Mr. Chairman, make a motion to remove this. Boy, we need to, what, we need to vote on all of the ones first that are before us, that have been first and seconded? So, can I make a motion to amend the, uh, the previous motion to approve that was seconded to exclude number two thirty-three?
Not to exclude it, but, uh.
To move it.
Uh, to move it to.
To move it.
Resolution is read.
Thank you.
What's the resolution number?
It's two, twenty fifteen dash one oh three.
One oh three.
One oh three.
All right.
That's his motion, I second that.
Probably moved and second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Now, in reference to the original, uh, motion, those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, it's unanimous, thank you.
The board will now consider the recommendation of Chief Operating Officer Alice Cohelis for the Director of Economic Development.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm pleased to, uh, give you a report on the process that took place and bring before you a recommendation for the, um, filling the Director of Economic Development. After all the applications were received and reviewed, the panel that you all, uh, asked be named to assist in the search process, um, we circulated the applications to the entire panel. The, based on their review, they made a recommendation that we conduct interviews of the four top candidates. Before the interview process could, um, could be scheduled, one of the candidates decided to withdraw, so we ultimately interviewed three candidates. The, all the questions that were posed and the scoring matrix was, uh, were developed by the panel members and the questions were developed by them as they were, um, we had various subject matter experts on the panel. And based on, after the, um, interviews were completed and the questions were ma-, uh, were posed and the scoring was tabulated, uh, it was the consensus of the entire board that, um, of the entire panel that we recommend to the board, Mr. Courtney Pogue as the, uh, for your consideration hires the next Economic Development Director. Mr. Pogue has a wealth of experience in both private sector and public sector. He has twenty years of experience in, um, not only in financial arena on the private sector, uh, including, um, investment banking, and, uh, commercial development, but also working for the city of Chicago and Cook County. He is presently the Deputy Director of Economic Development for Cook County in Illinois. He has a, um, a Bachelor's of Business Administration from Howard University and a Master's Degree from the University of Notre Dame. He has a multitude of certifications, including being a Certified Commercial Investment Member, a Certified Property Manager, a Certified Economic Developer. He is licensed in the state of Illinois as a managing real estate broker. He also holds certifications with the National Development Council on Certified Housing Development and Finance Professional. And also, um, holds from that same National Development Council Certified Economic Development, certification as a Economic Development Finance Professional. I have included in your package his, um, his resume and his application. We have conducted a thorough background check on Mr. Pogue. We checked references, we did a criminal background check. We have verified his, uh, degrees and his professional association certifications. Uh, you can see there was attached in your package the scoring from the applicants, I mean, from the panel members. Want, I highlighted this to the chairman, um, and I want to s- say it publicly. Mr. Pogue is perfectly willing and frankly desirous of, um, finding a home in Clayton County and he understands the value of importance, importance to the board and our community, that someone holding a position of this, um, importance and stature, how valuable it would be for him to, um, live within the county. His experience both in private and public sector, especially coming from the Chicago area, he has a wealth of experience with a lot of the same, um, issues that we have here and frankly, a lot of the same strengths that we have. And near a major international airport, O'Hare Airport, city of Atlanta, uh, being in a distribution hub, Chicago, Atlanta, especially Clayton County where we reside, he is, he comes with the strongest recommendation, his, um, we, we did personal checks, we spoke to supervisors and, uh, we got nothing but, glowing feedback and reports about his, um, his professional competency and his interpersonal skills, which I thought was, um, very important. Uh, some of the quotes we got, um, he's handled major projects that were complex and difficult. He handled them on his own and did a terrific job. His knowledge of credit and financing is commanding. His departure will leave a gaping hole in Cook County. He has a wealth of experience in dealing not only with county commissioners, but he had to deal with thirty-five municipalities within Cook County. Cook County is one of the largest, if not the largest county in the entire nation. So he has a proven track record of building, um, consensus among privately, private community leaders and our public sector leaders, our elected officials. He has dealt with city councils, county commissioners, mayors. He has, he has dealt with them all and I, um, I give him, um, I present him to you with our strongest endorsement that you seriously consider, tendering an offer to Mr. Pogue to be our next Economic Development Director.
What is his, speak on his, uh, salary requirement.
Yes, his present, his, um, present salary at Cook County is, um, one hundred and ten thousand dollars. I shared with him that, um, you may be disinclined, I could not guarantee that you would, uh, I could not speak for the board, would not speak for the board. And I could not guarantee him that you would, um, be willing to match that offer. I did my best sales job and point out that the cost of living in Clayton County is cheaper than Cook County. However, he, as I put in the memo, he is, um, uh, while he is not demanding a matching offer, he is disinclined to accept an offer of less than one hundred thousand dollars. The former director's, uh, salary was, uh, less than that. But I also know that the certifications, the education and the, uh, the really unique qualifications of this candidate, given his private sector, working with investment, um, in, investment banking industry and working for, with a public, um, entity, city of Chicago and Cook County, uh, warrant your serious consideration of tendering an offer to him of a hundred thousand dollars.
On his application, it says, will you accept the posted salary of ninety thousand? He says yes.
He did that, and, and most candidates you will find will do that, but then they also want to reserve the right to, to talk about it afterward.
There's no option for maybe?
I, I brought that up to him, okay, and I, uh, you know, we, we went, we went through that whole, um, whole thing. It is quite common for applicants to put that in and then see how well they do in the interview, once they see that, you know, it's, it's gone well and the offers come. You know, then it, everybody wants to talk about it. I did not make a commitment on the part of the board, I will not, cannot, but I'm, uh, I also committed to him though, that I would present his request to you, and I have done that this evening.
And in your opinion and the interview on board's opinion, he is a highly qualified candidate.
He, he just knocked the ball out of the park on all the questions. He has exhibited a strong mastery of all the issues, um, and he has just such a wealth of, uh, experience. This is a gentleman that can take this position, hit the ground running, there is absolutely no learning curve. He had also exhibited that he had done quite a bit of research about Clayton County. He, in, in some, in, in, we interviewed him twice, we came back. It was as if he had lived here. He understood our challenges, he knew our strengths, our weaknesses, he talked about our transportation corridors, our being a distribution hub. And he also was quite, uh, interested in hearing from the panel what the vision of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners were and, uh, what our community was looking for in the future. And we talked about all those and we expressed to him, uh, your vision, your concerns and, and, uh, the challenges that we had faced. Uh, this gentleman was well-prepared, well-prepared for this, uh, for this job interview. And I think would, is, is a worthy candidate for you considering offering above the starting pay.
When is he available to start?
Uh, he would like because he has hundreds of millions of dollars worth of projects in the pipeline. He has asked for thirty days, he would be ready to start in thirty days. I mean, he's having to come, he's finding, um, he's looking to rent property in Clayton County until he can find a, a home to purchase here. So, he's, he's asked to be able to have thirty days to, to, um, uh, close up his business there. He's a consummate professional and he would, if, if we were losing someone to another jurisdiction, we would, uh, especially someone holding a position like this, we would, we would want them to clean up, you know, and, and shepherd the cases that he already has in the, and they already have in the pipeline and not leave us in a lurch. So, I have to say I respect his professionalism and integrity that he, that he does not want to leave his present employer in a lurch. I have respect for the, for him for doing that.
Will you give us the name of the panel members? The name of the panel members?
Sure, um, panel members, they're listed on the, uh, on the, Ms., um, Ms. Bright's memo, which was included in your package, Dr. Hines, um, Mr. Vincent, Odessa Archibald and Yolanda Buford. Uh, she reviewed the applications, Ms. Buford later, uh, after a multitude of, uh, it was very difficult to try and get everybody's schedule together where they can all appear. Ms. Buford asked to, um, not participate in, she finally just gave up. We, every time we tried to set a, um, an interview time where the applicants were available and all the other panel members, um, were available, she asked to, uh, for us to go ahead and proceed because she always seemed to have a conflict. So Ms. Buford participated as far as, uh, reviewing the applications and making her recommendations and as far as cons-, uh, contributing to the construction of the panel questions, but did not actually, uh, participate in the interviewing process. The others did. In addition, and I might add, in addition to Ms. Bright and myself, we rounded out the panel.
Okay. So I'm gonna make the recommendation to accept Chief Coholic, Cohelis, uh, excuse me, Cohelis. Recommendation to accept Mr. Courtney Pogue as Economic, Economic Development Director and set a salary at a hundred thousand. Is there a second?
I'll second that, and I have a question.
All right, properly moved and second, questions, Mr. Emerson.
Thirty days from today is gonna be another thirty days from the fiscal year. In terms of the hundred thousand dollars, do we need to amend the current year budget?
Commissioner Emerson, we won't because, um, there's been some lapse in the salary because it's been vacant.
Okay.
So the, the funding is there.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I have one other question.
Mr. Emerson.
I apologize, my memory is not as good as it used to be. The position of Economic Development Director is non-civil service? Okay. No further questions.
All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you very much.
The board will now hear the request of Christie Barnes, Chief Staff Attorney.
Take them all together, unless one of the commissioners likes to go separately. Here and none, please proceed.
Mr. Chairman, the first, the first ordinance number twenty fifteen dash ninety-two is for first read only and is an ordinance adopted under the Home Rule Powers granted to Clayton County pursuant to Article Nine, Section Two, Paragraph One of the Constitution of the State of Georgia of nineteen eighty-three, amending the Clayton County Code of Ordinances, specifically relevant sections of the Clayton County, Georgia Public Employee Retirement System to amend the pension benefit formula, to increase plan funding levels, to repeal conflicting laws, ordinances and resolutions, to provide an effective date of this ordinance and for other purposes. Ordinance number twenty fifteen dash ninety-four is an ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County, Georgia as amended, specifically Part Two, Chapter Eighty-Six subdivisions, Article Two, Tree Protection, so as to delete Section Eighty-Six dash sixty in its entirety and replace with a new Section Eighty-Six dash sixty to be entitled exemptions, to include language exempting county trail and pathway projects, to repeal conflicting laws, ordinances and resolutions, to provide for severability, to provide an effective date of this ordinance and for other purposes. Ordinance number twenty fifteen dash ninety-five is an ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County, Georgia as amended, specifically Part Two, Chapter Six, Alcoholic Beverages, Article One in General, Section Six dash Two definitions, so as to delete the definition of restaurant and replace with an updated definition, to include adjusted minimum seating requirements for serving alcoholic beverages, to amend Section Six dash five, Six dash Five, Less License Eligibility, so as to delete Section Six dash Five in its entirety and replace with a new Section Six dash Five entitled License Eligibility, outlining modified license eligibility criteria, to repeal conflicting laws, ordinances and resolutions, to provide severability, to provide an effective date of this ordinance and for other purposes. And I'd like to point out that we received a recommendation from Commissioner Rooks to, um, also amend Section Six Point Five B, which is on the second page of your ordinance to say, no retail dealer license shall be issued to any applicant whose business does not have at least fifteen thousand dollars of inventory of food, tobacco products, household supplies or periodicals. And so we'd like to add in. And so, we'd like to add in that word, no retail dealer license, and we can provide that language to the clerk before we leave this afternoon. Resolution number 2015-96 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a sponsor/site agreement with Girls First Incorporated, providing for the terms and conditions under which the United States Department of Agriculture's food, summer food service program will be administered through the Senior Services Department to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution number 2015-97 is a resolution to allow Oak Forest Neighborhood Watch, Sector 4, to host their fifth anniversary picnic at Clayton County International Park, the St. Vic, the St. Vincent Pavilion, to authorize the chairman and the director of the Parks and Recreation Department to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. This event will be Saturday, May 16th, from 10:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. Resolution number 2015-98 is a resolution to allow State Representative Ronnie Maybra to host a town hall meeting at the South Clayton Recreation Center, to authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. This event will be April 27th, from approximately 6:00 p.m. until 7:30 p.m. Resolution number 2015-99 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County, on behalf of Clayton County Juvenile Court, to apply for, and if awarded, accept the 2015 Juvenile Justice Incentive Program Enhancement Grant to enhance current court services for high-risk youth at risk for commitment, to authorize the chairman to execute the grant application and otherwise perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. They will be applying for up to $750,000 of grant monies with no local matching funds required. Resolution number 2015-100 is, and similarly, 2015-101, is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to amend the intergovernmental agreement for the use and distribution of proceeds from the 2008 Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax for capital outlay projects, to authorize the chairman to execute the amendment and to perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget as needed to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, to repeal prior resolutions in conflict, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. And I provided an updated intergovernmental agreement this evening. Resolution number 2015-101 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to amend the intergovernmental agreement for the use and distribution of proceeds from the 2015 Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax for capital outlay projects, to authorize the chairman to execute the amendment and to perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget as needed to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, to repeal prior resolutions in conflict, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution number 2015-102 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into an agreement with Forensic Photography Incorporated, providing for the terms and conditions under which photography and related services will be provided, to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and to perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution number 2015-103 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to provide funds to Royal Phoenix Boulevard Property Owners Association to provide assistance in the formation of the Airport South Community Improvement District as identified on the exhibits attached here, too, to authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. This resolution has been updated to include, in the CID area, it will be the Phoenix, will be Phoenix Boulevard, West Fayetteville Road, Rivendell Road, Forest Parkway, Sullivan Road, and Camp Creek Parkway areas near Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport. And finally, is a request for remission in State of Georgia versus Isidoro Paliospancei and AAA Team Bonding Company in the amount of $19,332.50.
All right, do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Gregory seconded, properly moved a second. Any questions on any other items?
Yes.
Commissioner Edmondson.
I have just, just a quick question. On, on the two SPOST, 2015, 10, 101, 101, the two provisions that are deleted and replaced with reserved, I don't have a copy of the old.
Of the old?
Old, so what exactly under 1E and 9D was deleted?
The language in Section 1E stated, "The counties and municipalities agree that each approved SPOST project associated with this agreement shall be maintained as a public facility and in public ownership. If ownership of a project financed pursuant to this agreement is transferred to private ownership within 10 years of the SPOST expiration, the proceeds of the sale shall, for the purposes of this agreement, be deemed excess funds and disposed of as provided under OCGA 48-8-121G2." And so, that language would be removed, and...
Now, why is that? Is that because it's redundant to the OCGA?
No, it's, it's not redundant, it would just, it would just take away the, it would take away the requirement that if that public project is transferred to private ownerships within 10 years, that the, that the proceeds would be deemed excess proceeds. It just takes that away.
So, let's say that the county builds something with our portion of SPOST money, turns it on and sells it to the private sector, well, because that's been deleted, we get to keep the money and not put it back out to SPOST?
Hold on just a second, Mr. Commissioner. Mr. Commissioner, the, with this language being removed, any excess proceeds would just follow the terms of the statute. The statute is 48-8-121G2, which would, which says that if you have any excess proceeds, they either have to be used for the purpose of reducing indebtedness of the county, or if there is no such indebtedness, or if the excess proceeds exceed that indebtedness amount, then the excess proceeds would be paid into the county's general fund for the purpose of reducing ad valorem taxes.
So, it is redundant to the OCGA?
The, the, the language that I read to you, yes, so that language would be removed from the contract, from the IGA's.
Because it's not necessary, because OC, it says the same thing as what OCGA says?
The, the statute doesn't include any language about transferring a public project into private ownerships and what happens with the funds. It is not that specific, it just talks about what happens with excess proceeds.
Okay.
So, generally, had it been sold without this provision, if it were sold to a private entity, the money would go back to SPOST. Now, it goes in prior.
The money would come back to the general fund.
This is in the amendment.
It would be considered excess funds, which per the code would either pay off indebtedness of general obligation debt or would go back into the general fund to reduce.
That's what the request is, right?
The request is to just remove the language altogether.
Prior to that, if it's not removed, then what?
If it's not removed, if the cities were to sell any property within that time period, any proceeds received from that property would have to come back to the county and to the general operating fund, and then it has to be distributed per the code.
Okay.
Yes, and, and also specifically, if the public project is transferred to private ownerships within 10 years after the SPOST expiration.
But now, it's saying that if it goes from public to private, the money gets to stay with that particular municipality, who we're all on a prorata basis and charge of our own administrative costs. So, if the city of, I'll just say XYZ, if a city of XYZ has some SPOST funds in their apportionment, they used to build something that was on their SPOST list, turn it around and sell it at any point after a construction is complete, they get to keep the money to offset their debt, if they have any, or their ad valorem tax.
They, essentially, they would still have to...
And/or administrative costs.
They would still have to complete whatever projects they had on their SPOST list, but once they complete those projects, then still, any excess funds would be governed by the statute.
Sounds to me like this is converting SPOST revenue, has a possibility of converting SPOST into general fund. It's a mechanism by which SPOST revenues can be converted to general fund, simply by selling what we used SPOST to build, if we so chose. Is that right, Ms. Thurman? Ms. Bivens? Yeah? And is that the intent of what SPOST-funded projects are for? And then, why would we even want to consider this? I mean, what was, is there something specific that these two resolutions pertain to?
Well, other than the, how we will treat a, a public project turning over to private ownership, the other main concerns have to do with that the county, how the county is going to be responsible for, how the county and the cities will be responsible for the election cost of a SPOST.
Yeah, I saw that, where we do our prorata basis. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend my motion to approve, to exclude, or to move, consider separately.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move a second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
Ms. Barnes, who asked for the change? The cities?
The cities did.
Because it benefits them?
Mm-hmm.
I, that's rhetorical.
Is that what they call her, squirm?
Okay, any other questions, Commissioner Hambrich?
2015-92, regarding the first read, it's a first read, I know.
Yes, ma'am.
But is this something that we can do without the pension board, or does the pension board undertake this?
They already approved it.
They did approve it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Well, 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 I do. Of course I do. I think this is probably for Ms. Bivens, because we had some dialogue about it. I just, in my relook at it, I just want to make sure I'm clear. On Resolution 2015-102, regarding the four vehicles, page 4 of the contract, the four non-emergency vehicles that the county is to provide to the photographer, is that, are those new vehicles or those current vehicles?
They currently already have three vehicles. The fourth vehicle would either be a new vehicle or maybe something that's already in fleet, that we, that they could repurpose and use for that. I would have to speak to Mr. Mottaco.
Existing fleet vehicle.
Okay.
Okay, that was that question. Regarding the CID, 2015-103, in this particular resolution, it says we're transferring the $50,000 to Royal Phoenix Boulevard property. It doesn't appear that this is an investment for them to return the $50,000. Prior to, well, when we negotiated with Mr. Morseburger, is that right? That's his name? It was an investment, and he, and he agreed that the property owners will return the monies to us. Why is that different this time?
We're giving it to the association, not to the contractor, and that time, we gave it to the contractor.
For him to form an association designed to assist in forming the CID, but I don't have Mr. Morseburger's contract with me, but I, I didn't recall that the county would be repaid funds with Mr. Morseburger's, okay?
You were.
Okay.
Yeah, I do. That's why he gave the money back. Otherwise, he could just keep it, we wouldn't have an issue.
Well, can I ask you, your question in a roundabout way? Ms. Barnes, how come we're giving this to the property owner's association instead of to the contractor who's doing the work and the marketing? And why wouldn't that be a better way?
My understanding from Ms. Hall is that the property owners and/or the Property Owners Association have already provided funding for, to her, for her payment. So, this would be...
A reimbursement?
Well, this would just be a donation to the Property Owners Association for however they need to use it to form the CID.
I'm not comfortable with that at all. I'd be, I'd be happy to pay $50,000 towards the creation of a CID, but to give it to an association for however they want to use it, it's not the spirit of what we done last time or what we're trying to accomplish. I look at that, it's, it could be reimbursed, it doesn't have any contract provisions that says it has to be used for this?
Ms. Hall is here, and Ms. Hall, if you could come up and shed some light on this.
But she doesn't work for the association, she's the contractor. I'm thinking, why don't we give it to her instead of them?
Come on, sir.
The association is here, too.
I mean, the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish, I think we're all in agreement on, but I'm trying to get the details of it.
So, I'm Nicole Hall, and this is Frank Farrell, who is one of the property owners who is a member of the association. The association is who hired me. So, that is the reason when I spoke to Ms. Barnes that I did not feel that I should be the recipient of the funds to form the CID. All monies previously that have been provided have gone through the association, and then they've paid me.
I'm okay if you give it directly to her, that's fine. All we do is, it goes into our account, and then I go next door and our controller, I just send her a check later, so that's fine with me.
I have a question, as a property owner. We've had some discussions with the airport about the airport expansion, are you familiar with that?
A little bit, but probably couldn't, you can ask me a question, I'll try to answer it, but I'm not sure if I...
Is there any concern that the airport, airport's expansion is gonna impede on your property?
No, I'm pretty sure that the, it will not, and, and I think that the, if there's another runway, it'll be between the, the fourth and the fifth runway, and there's a lot of room in between there.
Okay.
Still behind, looking at the fence.
Yeah, I mean, we have people that lend us money and smarter people than I am, and they've looked at this, and they don't have, they don't feel there's any problem within the next 30 years.
And Ms. Hall, would that be the same for all the other properties that would, that Ms. Barnes listed earlier? Do we have any concern that we're gonna lose any of those properties to the airport's expansion?
They have not expressed their concerns to me. Most people, we try to make sure that they are aware of everything that's going on with the airport and the, the master plan, which is what's out there now. And based on what was, I guess, spoken to the aerotropolis, it's, it's not a definite. And so, they are basing what we're doing now as an opportunity... And so they are basing what we're doing now as an opportunity for them to, uh, bring in more revenue and help the area for now. But, no one knows at this point, if that's.
Do you know?
Well, even the Aerotropolis is not buying up land or, or adding to the airport's property, so no, it's not going to impede on that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Just, just to follow up from a legal or financial, so this resolution for the fifty thousand, and, and thank y'all, y'all's willingness to go either way, and again, I'm just looking for the protection of the county, having got our fingers perhaps slightly burnt from the last time around. There's no contract associated with this resolution or attached to it, so from a financial or legal standpoint, do we need to have any kind of provision in this resolution, or an attached contract that while this would be specific to the CID, or returned to us upon the incompletion of the CID, or perhaps a caveat that we will fund the assistance, but only upon the completion of the CID, since it is going through a third party?
My understanding is that it would, it's just a donation. And that's why we do not have an agreement for any deliverables, or any, 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 there's no agreement for any benchmarks, or any product deliverables, because it's, it's a donation.
Okay, then let me take this a step further. Can we legally use public funds to donate to a private association? And this might be more of a Ms. Bivens' question. And for that matter, could we use the same argument to give money to homeowner associations who ask us for help?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question, I was reading something.
So can we provide public funds to a private association? And if so, how come we, and could we use that, that same logic to give it money to private homeowner associations?
The city of College Park has done the same thing already, right?
Yes, they did.
I'm not saying that you got two wrongs maker, I'm just looking for, from our perspective.
Commissioner Emerson, let me look, I don't have the code in front of me that has the appropriate use of taxpayers, excuse me, taxpayers' dollars. But let me check and make sure specifically that it doesn't say that we can't use it for that particular purpose.
Can we use taxpayer dollars with assurance that because they're going to tax themselves, they're going to add more tax revenue to our coffers?
For us to get into an assurance like that, I think that.
Well, that's the purpose of a CID, they are self-taxing, correct? And so if they're self-taxing, they're adding more tax revenue to our coffers, no?
It has to be used within the CID though.
Within the CID.
Oh, they're using it within their.
It has to be in, within the CID.
Oh, to improve.
Exactly.
But that helps with economic development for the county.
Correct.
And therefore raises the property value. And therefore, dot, 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 dot.
Therefore, that's our investment, is the improvement.
So we get more taxes as a result of it.
Indirectly.
Property taxes.
Yep. I'm just trying to find.
And we'll help our new economic development.
Yeah, that's my other job, trying to find resolution.
All right, any other questions?
So, um, so I put forth an idea of whether or not we have an opportunity to claw back any of this money, can we even legally give it, legal says they don't know, finance doesn't know, because it is a private nonprofit association, five oh one C four, I believe those are. So, do y'all want to recommend to this board that we hold this until you do your due diligence, or not? I'm, in conception, I'm all for it, I just want to make sure we're making the right choice, and if you guys don't know, do you want us to consider it?
I would ask that the board hold on until Ms. Bivens and I can confirm that information.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend my motion for, to approve, to exclude this at the request of staff, Chief Staff Attorney Bivens, to further research the issue.
Chief Staff Attorney.
I'm sorry, Chief Staff Attorney Barnes. I forgot the B, right?
Is there a second to hold? Is there a second? All right, motion dies due to lack of a second. Now going back to the, any other questions? Any other items? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay, except on one oh three. Or specifically on one oh three.
Okay. Now, if you would take, uh, twenty fifteen one oh one, I believe it was.
One hundred and one oh one.
What was it, one hundred and one oh one. All right, we already read through it, so is there a motion? I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Motion to den, this motion to approve, or motion to deny?
Motion to approve.
Motion, motion, motion. All right, it dies due to a lack of a second.
That was one hundred?
One oh one and one hundred.
One oh one and one hundred.
And, Ms. Bivens needs to come back.
I don't think we do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll just take a, take a vote.
Do we want to take a motion to hold that item as well?
Which one?
The budget amendment.
Two dash thirty-three.
No, she's already read it, we're just going to take a vote on it now at this time. Which, which number was it?
Two dash thirty-three.
All right, concerning the CID, is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Probably moving to second, any other questions? Here and none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
It's four to one, Mr. Emerson, opposed.
And Mr. Chairman, we need an executive session for litigation and personnel.
Thank you.
Items number twenty-two and twenty-three are appointments to the Mental Health Developmental Disabilities and Addictive Diseases Community Service Board. The first is to fill the unexpired term of Keisha McPherson, who, uh, in a new full term. She's no longer a resident of Clayton County. Uh, item number twenty-three is for Timothy Carter, and this is for a new full term, he has resigned. The term is, uh, for three years for both of these appointments, expiring June thirty of two thousand eighteen. Does the board has, have any nominations for either of these appointments?
I have one nomination, Mr. Chairman.
For mental health?
Yes, sir. I'd like to nominate Attorney Keisha Wright Hill.
Is there a second? Uh, second, it probably moved to second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Any appointments for the other, um, physician? Okay. Item number twenty-four is appointment to the Housing Authority Board to fill the expiring term of Curtis Green. This term is for five years, expiring on May eleventh, twenty twenty, this is a full board appointment. This will tell from the April seventh meeting. Are there any nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Genus Powell. G E N U S.
Is there a second? Is there a second? All right, nomination fails due to a lack of a second. Is there another nomination? That's what we're holding.
Mr. Chair, I'll nominate, re-nominate Mr. Curtis Green.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Probably moving to second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Three to two passes.
We will now move into the zoning petitions. The first is the applicant RJE Investment, is the petitioner present? This is a request for a rezoning from Heavy Industrial District to General Business District, property located at ninety-four thirty-four South Main Street in Jonesboro, Georgia. Do we have some opposition here this evening? Okay, we may hear from the petitioner.
Yes, I'm Rodney Owen with RJE Investments, and I am the applicant requesting this rezoning of ninety-four thirty-four South Main Street. Does the board have any questions that I might answer?
Well, you're going to be real easy on us, aren't you? You know when there's no opposition, just to keep it short, right? Commissioner Gregory, you have anything?
No, that's.
That's not you.
Ms. Emerson.
Emerson, I'm sorry.
The zoning advisory group recommended approval with some stipulations regarding some specific uses, tattoo parlors, and what, some shopping? What are your thoughts on, 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 on that? I know there were some questions about, but beauty salons and tattoo parlors?
I have no problem with it, because that is not a user that I would be particularly interested in leasing to, frankly. It was tattoo parlors and a corner grocery, I believe.
Corner grocery there, that doesn't sound like, yes.
And I'm not set up for either one of those as a potential tenant. I try to restrict my tenants to some extent, as far as what will fit in with the complex, because I am restricted as far as parking to some extent, and there's just some uses that I would rather not have.
Okay, okay. Would you, um, well, one second, Ms. Barnes, I have a technical question. And I haven't read the zoning ordinances in the last few minutes, but do we have, do we, can we legally define corner grocery store? Or do we need some clarity on that term, if we're going to add it as an actual stipulation for type of business use?
It's not, corner grocery store is not defined in the ordinance, so in order to make sure that we have some clarification about where it would be, we may need to include some language about what part of the property you're referring to. But corner grocery store is not a defined term.
Sir, could you help elaborate, I wasn't at the zoning advisory group proceedings, and I think I grasped the spirit of it. What, what is your interpretation of corner grocery store?
Basically, I interpret it as a grocery store, period. Whether it's a, uh, seven eleven, or something like that, or a full-service grocery.
Just retail sales?
Yeah, and I am not set up for that, basically.
So if we were to define that, and I, I'm just talking out loud here, if we were to define that as retail sales?
As far as groceries?
Yes, sir.
I would have no problem with it.
Is, Ms. Barnes, is that too broad?
Reset, retail sale of groceries?
Right.
Yeah, by all means.
This one?
No, go ahead.
Oh, hi. Kimberly Smith, planning zoning department consultant, uh, with a collaborative firm. As you all know, Casey is no longer with the county as the zoning administrator. And Mr. Patrick Aggie Gaye is at the Atlant, as the American Planning Association, a conference in Seattle. So it has defaulted to me, I'm Kimberly Smith, and if you have any additional questions, I'll be happy to help you with them.
Okay, well, specific to the, the item before us, I'm looking for some language consistent with, with what the petitioners.
And I did not, um, get a copy of those conditions that you are referring to. As I, I was at the meeting, and according to my notes, they recommended approval without conditions, I didn't.
I have the minutes here, and it said approval with the conditions of no tattoo parlors and no corner grocery stores allowed.
And I would, uh, just leave it at grocery store, retail sale of groceries.
Retail sale of groceries?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes, does that fit for you?
Yes, it does.
Just yourself, sir?
I have no problem.
Does the general business zoning category currently provide for any kind of adult entertainment, or massage parlor? And if so, could we consider excluding those uses too?
It, it doesn't allow adults, it, it doesn't allow anything about adult entertainment, or anything like that. It's not a permitted use.
Massage parlor?
Not a permitted use.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about those?
No.
All right, well then I.
Question, do we know, do you already know what you, what the property will be used for?
Well, it's existing property, it's already been developed, I've got existing buildings. And it's just a matter of, it might give me more flexibility and more of a pool of potential users and tenants.
Do you currently have tenants in that building?
Sure.
What type of business do they have?
Uh, Trinity Paint Center, Curves, uh, bookkeeping service, glass contractor.
Any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the zoning request with the conditions of no tattoo parlors and no retail sales of groceries.
Is there a second?
You didn't want to have the other two? Oh, it's not permitted, I apologize, I apologize, I'll second it.
Probably moving to second, any other questions, here and none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We will now have our final zoning petition for this evening. The applicant is Dewberry slash Daniel Gibbs, requesting a modification to existing zoning conditions located on Grant Road in Ellenwood, Georgia. Is the petitioner present? Is there any opposition to this zoning request? Then petitioner may proceed.
Yes, sir, state your name.
Uh, my name is Max Pickers, I'm representing Dewberry. Our clients just want to purchase the property, uh, they had some zoning conditions, uh, twenty years ago, and just trying to get those taken off, so they purchased the property.
And you're going to just do it as a parking lot, right?
Uh, that's their current idea of what they'd like to develop.
Parking lot for the FedEx? I mean, I'm asking you, that's what you told me, so I needed to say it. I'm sorry.
You are representing.
Say that again.
Then we still have to go back through and get our plans approved.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions for? Commissioner?
Motion to approve the petition.
Second.
Probably moving to second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous, thank you.
If there is no further business to discuss, we did have a request to go into executive session for litigation and personnel matters.
Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Probably moving to second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Before you adjourn, Ms. Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you call me tomorrow, I have a question about the Highway forty-two overlay?
Yes, ma'am, I will.
You can give me a call tomorrow, thank you.
All right, motion to reconvene.
How much that we reconvene?
Second.
Probably moving to second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's unanimous. Ms. Barnes?
Mr. Chairman, I have a request to, for the county to, um, enter into a settlement, or to provide settlement funds payable to Webb and Segoria LLC in the amount of seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. And this is pertaining to matters involving, uh, Sidney Lindo bringing a civil action against Eric Arroyo in Clayton County, Georgia.
Is there a motion?
I move that we accept. Second.
Probably moving to second, any questions? Here and none, those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, it's unanimous. I thought it was another.
Not another litigation.
Okay. All right, well, I'm going to make a motion to appoint, help me with the name, Lataria Francis, as the interim director of Elections, what is it, Elections Board?
No.
Elections.
Elections Office.
Office, Elections Office. Is there a second?
I'm going to second, because we got to have somebody by Friday.
All right, so, probably moving to second, any questions? Here and none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. All right, and is there a motion by the board to, whether or not to extend or Chief Operating Officer Alice Kohelis' contract, which is due to, that, that is due May fifth of twenty fifteen?
For how long?
Is there a motion on?
I'll make a motion.
What are you making a motion to do?
Make a motion to extend the contract.
All right, is the motion on table to extend? Is there a second? Is there a second? All right, here none, dies due to a lack of a second. Are there any other motions?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion not to extend, uh, Chief Kohela's contract.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, properly moved and second. Any questions? Commissioner Hambro.
Thank you.
All right, those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed.
Nay.
It's four to one. Is there any other business before this board? Here and none.
Can, can we make that immediate or how, how is that working?
Okay, I will amend my motion to be effective immediately. Um, and, Mr. Chair, I would also like to recommend that we appoint Mr. Dietrich Stanford as, um, interim COO.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Properly moved and second. Is there any questions or discussion? Here and none. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Nay.
Four to one. Motion passes.
What do we say about the, uh, immediate?
She said that was part of her motion.
So just, I have some clarification on this. So we have an existing contract through May 5th. There was a motion to extend that that failed. Then there was another motion not to extend that, that passed. Then there's another motion
Amendment to the motion.
Amendment to the motion to make that effective immediately.
Because we can, there, we can cancel that contract at any time.
So, uh, so are you saying if that the motion is effective immediately that we're not extending the contract after May 5th? Or effective immediately that you're mending the contract from...
I'll restate my motion if necessary.
Okay.
This is for clarity.
We were about to say something, Ms. Barnes.
I was, and I think Commissioner Gregory was about to say at the same time, is it to, is it to cancel the contract now?
Yes.
Okay. And so we would need a motion for, to clarify.
Okay, so do I need to withdraw that motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I withdraw my previous motion.
No, hold on a second. Just...
Just do the, another one.
So just amendment. Okay, yes. Okay, I make an amendment to my previous motion that the contract be canceled effective immediately. Second.
Properly moved and second. Any discussion? Here and none. Those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed.
Nay.
It's four to one.
I'm sorry. And also the amendment to appoint Mr. Dietrich Stanford as, um, acting COO effective immediately.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Properly moved and second. Any questions? Here and none. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
Four to one. Does that conclude business, Ms. Barnes?
Yes, sir. That's all I have.
All right, well, motion to adjourn then.
I move to adjourn.
Uh, second, and properly moved and second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.